Okay, it's six o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting of the Indian Trail Planning Board to order. We'll start with attendance. Would you state your name?
Kim Sandoval.
Meg Fielding.
Ken Curtis.
Sidney Sandy.
Patty Gamas.
Thank you. The first order of business is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which is August 20th. Does anybody have corrections or additions to the minutes? I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes. Let's move on to our first order of business.
Good evening, Planning Board. I don't know if you were informed, but we're going to try something different tonight. We're going to try and present from this spot, not anymore from the desk. So, we get a nice view, and you get a nice view of us. All right. So, our first case for tonight is a pretty straightforward case. ZM 2024-0048, named Culp Plumbing, referring to the development that is in mind at this property. And this is a conventional rezoning, or a straight rezoning. So, let's review some of the details of this request. As I read some of these bullet points, I'll just show you the aerial map, and you can visualize as I explain it. So, the request is to rezone a 0.5 or half an acre portion from Regional Business District to Light Industrial. And you can see that in the map, highlighted in red, named rezoned area. This is a portion that is part of a property with address 3427 Haywood Road. This property is 3.8 acres in size. And, well, a little bit about the intent behind the request. The applicant is Mr. William J. Culp from Culp Investment Properties. He intends to purchase this portion from the property owner, combine it with his property. As you can see in the map, the parcel that's highlighted in blue, the absorbing property, the intention is to absorb it into that parcel. But, one of the steps to do that is to also adjust the zoning of that property. So, that is the reason why we're here. That parcel is on Star Crest Drive. It's 2.361 acres in size, and it's part of an industrial park that is accessible through Chamber Drive. The overall purpose is to establish or develop an office and a warehouse building on that property. The property owner of the subject property, of the property in yellow, is Harless Meters. That's his name. A little bit more information about the subject property in yellow. Like we said, it's in Haywood Road. It contains a single-family house currently. It's a house that was built in 1940. The parcel portion in red, we talked about its purpose. It's going to be combined. The other nearby properties on Haywood Road, the properties that you see on the northeast corner of that map, those are also single-family homes built between 1940, 1950, most of them. Some of the newest houses in that area was built in 2005. And as you drive through it, even when you see it over aerial footage, you can see a lot of tree cover. You can see lot sizes that are what you would typically see in a rural area. And so, that's the character that this neighborhood features. Now, when you direct your attention towards the west of this subject property, you see the roof footprints of these major warehouses, and that gives you an idea of the size and the location of the industrial park that is in that area. And we'll see in the next slide, a zoning map that will help distinguish those two areas. Just a few photos. We have two photos of the property. This is looking at the front of the property. Now, when you look at this, it's just trees and bushes, but the house that's on this property is tucked deep into this parcel, and so, it's not visible from the road, but it's back there. The house that you see on the left side, that's part of another property. In fact, there's five homes clustered together around the subject property, and they all share the same access. But, this is a view of that. Another photo we'd like to share with you is just looking at what Haywood Road looks like, as if you were driving away from the property towards Seacrest Shortcut Road. And you can see all the tree cover and the rural character. So, next, let's talk about zoning in the area. The subject property is zoned RBD, Regional Business District. And so, the portion that we're proposing to rezone is also zoned RBD. The proposal is to rezone it to Light Industrial, which will then be combined with the absorbing property, and it'll match the zoning. So, when you see that area and the ultimate change, the zoning makeup of the area is not going to change substantially. And when we think about the changes, we think about the impact that it's going to have on the residents, on Breckenridge subdivision and the Haywood Road residents. For them, it's not going to change. It's not going to be any different than what they're already seeing. So, that's why we say the makeup is not going to change substantially. The next slide we want to consider is the recommendations from the Comprehensive Plan, the future land use map. Since the area, the rezone area will end up combined with the parcel on Star Crest Drive, it's going to become part of the Highway 74 Far East Village Plan. This village, or this area, is predominantly industrial because it contains the industrial park at Chamber Drive and parts of the Hinson Brick Mining Quarry. And future development is expected to remain business and industrial in this village. Therefore, the proposal to rezone this portion to Light Industrial and then combining it with an existing Light Industrial property is in line with the recommendations from the comp plan. So, in summary, this is a straightforward situation, a simple exchange of land between two property owners. The rezoning to Light Industrial is consistent with the existing conditions and future land use recommendations, and the area is not going to experience significant zoning changes. Here's the requested action before you, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Okay, do we have any questions? Are there any public comments?
You have a question?
I do. I do. Just to clarify, because when I read it, it didn't register as such. They are subdividing just slightly.
Yes.
That piece of property that abuts Haywood. So, they're taking a slice out of it, and then it will join. It will not get its own ID, it will not get its own property number. It will become part of the property on Star Crest.
Correct.
On Star Crest.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there being no further comments or questions, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of zoning map amendment ZM 2024-0048, Culp Plumbing, as presented.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, aye, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Onward and upward.
Let's shift this up a little bit. Good evening, Planning Board. My name is Tyler Heyoski. I am a senior planner with the town. And before you, our second case is CZ 2023-0067, Indian Trail Daycare, which is at Rogers Road, and it is a conditional rezoning, which is going to be a little bit different than the conventional one that we just saw. The request is to conditionally rezone 3.6 acres at the intersection of Wesley Chapel Road and Rogers Road. The current zoning is SF1, which is low-density, single-family, and they're proposing the zoning of CZ NBD, which is Conditional Zoning Neighborhood Business District. And the intent is to allow for daycare uses on the property, as well as reduce the minimum parking requirements, and to mitigate any appearance of spot zoning. The applicant is Blanton Hamilton with Tribec Properties, and he is in attendance. Here's an aerial map. You can see the subject property outlined in yellow. It's completely wooded. To the southeast, you can see Melrose Place, Shallow Valley Primary School, Sun Valley Elementary School, Sun Valley Middle School. To the northeast, as well as a variety of other residential developments surrounding it. Here's a street view looking southeast along Rogers Road towards Melrose Place. So, the subject property is going to be on the right, and it's heavily wooded right This is looking the opposite way, northwest, along Rogers Road towards the Wesley Chapel-Stouts Road intersection. And you can see the lights off in the far distance, and the property is going to be on the left-hand side. This is across the street, looking north, across Rogers Road, where there's a single-family And then, this is looking just dead into the property due south. Another street view, there is some frontage along Wesley Chapel Road, and so, this is looking southwest along that with the subject property on the left-hand side. And then, the distance where you see that house, that's part of Chelsea Place subdivision. And then, this is looking directly in the opposite direction, back at the Wesley Chapel and Rogers Road intersection. This is the very south side of the property. This is one of the closest adjacent properties potentially impacted by the proposal at 5350 Rogers Road. And you can see that there's a pretty good healthy landscape buffer and tree area that's existing on the right, which is the subject property. And lastly, here's Creekside. This is going to be at the rear of the development, along Chelsea Place subdivision, and the subject property is going to be on the left-hand side. You can't really see it, but there's a creek right there where that tree line is. Here's a look at the current zoning of the area. There's going to be a hodgepodge of different things. If you look in the top-right corner, you can see Old Monroe with Sun Valley High School. And as you go down to the southwest, Sun Valley Middle School. Once you get towards the Rogers Road and Wesley Chapel intersection, you can see that the property outlined in yellow is SF1, Single Family Low Density Residential. Some of the abutting subdivisions, such as Melrose Place and Chelsea Place, are also SF1. Across the street to the upper-left, the northwest is going to be Holly Park subdivision, which was part of an old PUD, which was a planned unit development, which is now classified as CZ SF5, Conditional Zoning. Here's the future land use from the 2041 Comprehensive Plan. It is calling for medium density on the subject property across the street where there's the single-family home. You can see that it's still low-density. But, one thing I do want to point attention to is everything that you see in light purple, those are going to be institutional uses that are going to be Sun Valley High School, Middle School, Elementary School, and then the Shallow Valley Primary School. So, now, this is an overview. Like I said, you can see from the photos that it's currently a wooded lot. Proposing to conditionally rezone the property to allow for the daycare use, reduce the minimum parking requirements, and to mitigate that spot zoning. Future land use shows medium density, and they're proposing Conditional Zoning Neighborhood Business District, which would be commercial. I pointed out earlier, but this is just a table showing kind of what's around. They're typically surrounded right now by SF1, which is the low-density, single-family, all single-family detached homes. And then, where the Holly Park development is budding, it's just open space for the Holly Park development. Analysis continued, and this is kind of why I wanted to bring attention to that future land use map, which showed the light purple, which were the institutional uses. Though the Neighborhood Business District may seem to be a little bit further away from the commercial that you're seeing near the intersection of Old Monroe and Wesley Chapel in that Sun Valley area, the zoning map itself doesn't do justice to the actual uses that are on the ground now. Anybody who's had any experience with school traffic or anything else sees that there are more intensive uses that are allowed in that SF1 district that's currently shown on the map, that don't necessarily translate to what's going on in the surrounding area.
Yeah, I live in that area.
Yeah. There's a lot of schools. And so, planning staff is of the opinion that the existing zoning districts that are shown out there don't accurately represent what's currently ongoing. This is a little excerpt from the UDO, Chapter 530, which deals with our business districts. And so, the NBD, Neighborhood Business District, is intended to allow small-scale retail and business service uses in close proximity to residential neighborhoods. The NBD district is intended to allow for convenience, shopping, and services close to home without the need to travel long distances. A proposed daycare center falls within the intent of the NBD district with its proximity to existing residential developments, and is much more suitable, at least in planning staff's opinion, than additional residential development that can occur by right on the property. As it stands today, I think I mentioned it in your staff report, but an SF1 property has to have a minimum of 20,000 square foot per lot and a minimum 100-foot road frontage. There's over 500 feet of road frontage along Rogers Road, and it's a 3.6-acre parcel. So, by simple math, they could by right subdivide it and do five lots without any sort of approval other than getting their driveway permits from NC DOT. If there were the recommendations for medium-density residential based on a comprehensive plan, that calls for two to four units per acre, which you think four units per acre, that's quarter-acre lots, with a three-and-a-half-acre lot. If it was potentially rezoned correctly, it could yield a higher number of lots for residential right there at the intersection. So, let's move to the concept plan. As you can see, dead center, you have the footprint of the daycare facility, which is just over 10,000 square foot. Directly behind is going to be outdoor play areas. And directly behind that, you can see kind of like a clouded zigzag line. That's the existing tree line, part of which they're proposing to save and stay completely out of. It's already a well-established buffer. They have to stay out of the creek to begin with, so it helps serve dual purposes.
Is that 50 feet?
I want to say that is...
The area is so small on the map, I can't...
Yeah, no, it's 25-foot landscape buffer, which is more than what they're technically required to do. 15 feet is what's required between a group one land use against single-family detached homes. But, the creek buffer is 30 feet, so they'll have to stay out of that regardless. If you look towards the right-hand side, you can see that they're continuing some of that tree preservation area all the way up to the Wesley Chapel-Stouts Road. You can see some of the diagonal hatching along Wesley Chapel-Stouts Road, and then on the bottom towards Rogers Road, and that's going to be where they're going to have to dedicate some of that right-of-way to NC DOT for related traffic improvements. As you move down on that Rogers Road side, you can see that they're going to replace the existing five-foot sidewalk, which is what's already there, as you could see in the photos that I showed you earlier. One thing we are calling for to help alleviate any conflict in uses is enhanced front lot line landscaping. Our UDO already currently has some regulations in place for if it's a parking lot that fronts a street, you have to have trees every 30 feet with some shrubs, and we'd be calling for some additional items on top of that to help reduce that impact visually. You can see some of the darker gray in the Rogers Road area, and those are proposed roadway improvements. And then, as you continue up on the left-hand side, like I said, they don't have to have a 50-foot buffer or 25. It should be 15. They're proposing a 50-foot buffer along that left-hand side to mitigate any impacts with the existing residential property at 5350 Rogers Road. And then, you can see the relative location of their proposed BNP, which is Stormwater Here's a proposed rendering that they had for building elevations. It's subject to change a little bit, but it'll relatively have to follow this. This isn't their first daycare, so they already have a prototype that they can relatively use. And then, we went back and forth with them to make sure that it met our design and construction standards in Chapter 1320 of our UDO. And here are just some additional schematics. County coordination, Union County Public Works, water and sewer is accessible at the site. Otherwise, there would not be all the homes that are out there to begin with. Union County Environmental Health, if there is anything that they have to review, it'll be during site plan review. And then, Union County Fire Marshal, the same thing. It would be if they get approval and move forward to construction drawings. Traffic and parking, that's always one of the biggest thing. As with every development that is either by right or that we bring before y'all, they must meet all the Town of Indian Trail requirements, as well as NC DOT, unless there's certain things that are specifically conditioned out. The one thing that they are requesting be conditioned out, like I mentioned earlier, is some of that parking. Town of Indian Trail requires 60 parking spaces, based upon the square footage of the building, as well as the employees, the max amount. The applicant is proposing and requesting that to be conditioned down to 47 spaces on the premise that the 18 employees that they have aren't going to all be there at once. There are going to be staggered shifts throughout the day with it being a daycare use. And then, same thing, the pick-up and drop-off times will be staggered out as well, depending on each group. So, that'll help mitigate some of those concerns. That was part of the TIA, which is the Traffic Impact Analysis, that was prepared by Davenport, a third-party engineer on behalf of the applicant. Traffic, roadway improvements have been reviewed by NC DOT per that Traffic Impact Analysis that I was mentioning, and those are the ones that were shown on the concept plan earlier in dark gray. That's the biggest reason why this case has taken so long. You'll see on the next slide or two about the community meetings occurring back in January of this year. And the biggest issue for the delay in taking it to Planning Board was the back-and-forth negotiations between the applicant, the town, and NC DOT on what these related improvements were going to be. It's not something that's arbitrary. It's something that the town and DOT take seriously. As I mentioned, two community meetings back in January. There were three residents in attendance from both Chelsea Place, which is to the southwest of the proposal, and then Melrose Place, which is to the southeast along Rogers Road. Questions were answered by the applicant and town staff about the project, and the main concerns were stormwater flooding, drainage, traffic and safety, and then the notification area being too small. Which, as I found out today, compared to the rest of the areas and other municipalities, we actually go well above and beyond what that requirement is. So, in summary, while the future land use recommendations based on the Comprehensive Plan call for medium-density residential, planning staff is of the opinion that the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan for the following goals: Community Engagement Goal 1, Land Use and Housing Goals 1 and 4, as well as Economic Development Goal Number 1. And we consider the request reasonable. So, as with a conditional rezoning, there's not only the concept plan and building elevations and other steps that they have to go through, like the Traffic Impact Analysis, but there are also some voluntary conditions that the applicant is willing to agree to back and forth. And so, they're already going to have to comply with Town of Indian Trail Unified Development Ordinance, which is going to guide their landscaping, lighting, other things like that, unless specifically conditioned out. The architecture is going to have to generally match what they provided with the elevations. It's going to reduce the minimum parking requirements from 60 spaces as required based on the UDO Division 1,000 parking, down to 47 spaces, as generally depicted on the concept plan. The increased landscape buffering and tree preservation areas is generally depicted on the concept plan. Enhanced landscape screening shall be required along the frontage of Rogers Road. The town requirement for a six-foot sidewalk along roadways of new development shall be reduced to the proposed five-foot, since it's already existing out there. And it would be a conflict to try and just raise it for that small little area. Traffic improvement shall be constructed as proposed in the concept plan, recommendations from the TIA and NC DOT requirements. But, overall, the final determination of the improvement shall be determined by NC DOT during site plan review and permitting. Trash collection, just to make sure that they're not doing it at 3:00 a.m. and disturbing neighbors. We're limiting them that it shall not occur between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. And then, lastly, in the Neighborhood Business District, the following nuisance businesses shall be prohibited, including amusement arcades, billiards, parlors, tobacco and vape shop, outdoor storage, cemetery, mausoleum, wholesale vehicle sales, convenience market. And then, this is one additional line that we worked with the applicant on, and they agreed to. Any additional uses notated as land use Group 2 or land use Group 3 on the table of permitted uses are also prohibited. So, you can, not that you would typically have a land use Group 3, which would be warehousing or something else on a Neighborhood Business District parcel, but you might have a land use Group 2 that is like a medium-intensive commercial, and so, they're willing to not allow that, only land use Group 1. And so, the requested action is a motion to recommend approval of a conditional zoning case as presented, a motion to recommend with revised conditions, or a motion to recommend. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Yes, Madam Chair. My main concern is the traffic out there, and that's a very, very busy intersection, and a tremendous lot of traffic at school in the mornings and in the afternoons in Inglewood Shad and this additional traffic there. And I know you've moved the driveway down closer to the Monroe side, but I think ingress and egress from this daycare is going to be a serious problem there, so...
Yeah. That was one of the biggest concerns as we were going through the community meetings. I know specifically some people in Melrose Place were talking about how they couldn't turn left out at certain times of the day to head towards the intersection out of their development. And like I said, this was the biggest concern that we went back and forth with, with the applicant, NC DOT, and then Todd Hunt Singer, our engineering director, who's also in I want to say part of the concessions that NC DOT, they went through and looked at the signalization of the light at Wesley Chapel and Rogers signalization of the light at Wesley Chapel and Rogers Road, and found out that they can change some of the signalization to help improve some of that stacking that is occurring out there. Of course, there's always going to be some of the peak times with schools. That isn't the norm. I'll let Todd speak on more of it related to a traffic flow improvement, if he would like.
Do you want to have public comments first? And then y'all can make y'all's comments. That way, somebody's going to ask about traffic, and I'm going to get it all done first, and then I can respond after that.
Good idea, okay. Are there any public comments for this project?
Yes, ma'am, I have one public comment, Miss Alpa Patel. If you can step to the podium and state your name.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Alpa Patel. The biggest concern with this project is obviously the traffic pattern. That's the busiest intersection. In the mornings, during school hours, it does get backed up a lot. And with this school, of course, the school would be doing a lot of events, and the parking spaces that is suggested by the applicant is 47. With the events, my concern is where the families will park, because it's only 47 spaces, and that includes the stock parking as well. So, school would be doing a lot of events, open house and holidays and all whatnot. So, just since neighborhoods would burden those parking spaces, where the families be parking in the neighborhoods, that is also a concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No more public comments, ma'am.
Okay, I think there's a lady in the back.
I didn't know what this topic was about, but I would like to speak.
Okay, would you come up to Jennifer and put your name on the list, and then you can approach the podium?
So, good evening. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. I had no idea what this topic was about or where it was located.
Would you give us your name, please?
Oh, sure, Lynn Cole.
Okay.
So, I live a little farther down Wesley Chapel in Heritage. That road is an absolute nightmare. The little crossing guard out there, he's doing what he's paid to do, and it's an important job, but if you're trying to go anywhere in your car, good luck. And it makes sense to put a daycare near the schools, because it's convenient for parents and yada, yada, all that stuff, but it's a nightmare, and I cannot see that there's enough road improvements there to not make it that much worse. And I would echo her concern about parking, reducing parking in a place where there's never enough parking, so they're going to be parked out on the street. It's just going to, it's just going to snowball, and it's going to get worse and worse and worse.
Okay. Todd, would you talk about the improvements that are planned for Wesley Chapel Road? Because I know there's something in the works.
Yeah, there is a project in the future. I say the future, because it's not going to be anytime soon. It's called the Wesley Chapel Widening Project, which would be from 74 all the way to this intersection, Rogers Road, and will not go past Rogers Road at this time, because the traffic counts don't warrant that. Way DOT approaches projects where they're trying to get federal dollars is you've got to get to about 18,000 cars a day, and once you pass Rogers Road, it significantly drops. That being said, because that project is, it's in a holding pattern, meaning it doesn't, it's not getting enough points to make it an actual approved project to actually get funds right now. It's like, I think 35th is the last time I saw it on the list in the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. So, we, as a town, we're doing a joint venture with the Union County called Critical Intersection this year's report, and we decided that was, that this particular intersection, Rogers Road and Wesley Chapel, was actually on the 2016 one. But it, we felt like we weren't going to get enough points back in, you know, of course, I'm not, I wasn't part of that, but from what I've understood, back then, 2016, it just wasn't a viable project to go after federal dollars for. So I put it back on it for this particular report. Now, again, we're going to go after and try to get money to improve this intersection, but that doesn't guarantee it's going to happen anytime soon. So I would caution on that, but we are pursuing that project, and it will be part of the final report, which is coming out in a few months. Now, that being said, there's no improvements in this site itself, is not required to do any improvements on Wesley Chapel Road. It's just Rogers Road. As Tyler said, they are changing the signalization as part of this project on the signal heads. So all four signal heads will get changed out at the intersection, and the queues will actually be lengthened than what they are now. That being said, based on the TIA and the extended storage left-turn lane that's being built for this project, right now you only have 120 feet of left turn in front of the site to take a left down Wesley Chapel Road. That's been extended between an additional 250 feet, and that's just getting to the entrance of the driveway. And if you look at the concept, they're extending even further down another 100 feet. So you're talking from 120-foot storage, which you can only get probably eight cars in there, you're getting 16 additional in a storage lane, and then you're getting extended queues on all four legs of the intersection. So, based on what the TIA states, that it should not back, that left turn should not back up past that entrance, even though they are making more storage past the entrance, based on the queuing they've done and the timing sequences they've changed at the intersection. Now, that's, TIA is a conservative in the sense they added 3% growth rate to those TIA's, and that's something the town does. And this technically was, and I apologize, the planning department didn't know this, but, because it gets a little iffy when it comes to TIA's. This project did not, was not warranted for a TIA based on DOT's requirements. You have to, you have to pretty much do 4,000 cars a day coming out of your entrance for DOT to even look at it. But it barely triggered our requirements, so we initiated, technically, we initiated the TIA on this project, but we have the DOT review it with us, because it's, the side roads are DOT roads, they're not ours. So we like for them to get their buy-in, because again, they're going to have to maintain these roads in the future, once these improvements are put in place. So I just wanted to let y'all know, it barely actually triggered our TIA requirements. And now, being, that being said, and now they're having to do all these other improvements just to try to actually build a stay on a corner intersection. So that's why it took them so long to get to this point.
Okay, so the additional storage is going to be making a left turn from Rogers Road onto Wesley Chapel?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to get it in my head.
So yeah, so yeah, that left turn lane right there along Rogers Road is the one that got, getting extended. Again, it ain't but 120 feet of storage right now, right here. If y'all want to look back real quick, that left turn there.
Right, right, okay.
And so, from that intersection to that entrance right now, based on the TIA and the extended queuing they're going to allow, timing-wise, it's showing that it's not going to back up past that driveway. Now, I'm just quoting what the TIA says, I can't guarantee.
In the best of all possible worlds.
Right, right. Well, I'm just saying that's how the models are, when they ran the models, that's how it came out to be. I don't, I don't view the models, that's, we don't have the capability to do that. But DOT has run their own models, that's another reason why we had a meeting. We've had two different meetings with DOT on this. They actually ran a model themselves, which I've never been a part of. I've never seen them do that, but I think they were kind of worried more about people trying to take a left out of the daycare to get onto the roadway, and the queuing that would occur. That's why they made them do a two, a three-lane entrance to their site. They were worried more about backing up in the internal site and people trying to get out, and that's why they allowed them to build a, we call a dual-left turn sequence right there at the entrance, so people can at least get into that lane if they need to, if they can't get into the through lane, which you see at a lot, you know, in Charlotte and everywhere else. And we're actually doing it in our complete street project. We're adding a, what do we call, a third-lane dual-left. That way, people that's got the houses alone in Inshaw Road can actually get out, maybe get in that lane, then try to get out onto the roadway.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay. Any other questions, guys?
Who pays for the improvements in this project as it is?
The developer will pay for all those improvements.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And I guess the other question is the maximum capacity of the daycare. Do we know that?
Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here. Mr. Blanton-Hamilton.
Yeah.
Yeah, you come up, come up here.
Thank you, Todd.
No problem. Appreciate it. My name is Blanton-Hamilton. I'm with Triback Properties. We're a development company here in the area, and first of all, I want to thank the staff of Indian Trail. Tyler and Todd and Brandy have been great to work with over this long period of time that we've been working together, and so I thank all of you for your professionalism. This has not been easy. It is, I will say, having done, you know, terrible things like Harris Teeters and Walgreens and things like that, you can imagine, and this is over almost 40 years of working in this business, this is relatively easy to come before you and ask for this. And I say that not, not in a way that's, you know, in any way diminishing some of the concerns that you've heard earlier, but relative to most uses like this, this is a very neighborhood-friendly one. And I just want to tell you a little bit about, about that. The company that sadly, let me start with this, sadly during the pandemic, a lot of daycare centers went out of business. The reason this company didn't go out of business is because they're huge. They own about 1,000 units in the United States. They're the second-largest in the country. They have about a billion and a half in revenues, and they were able to sustain what essentially was no business for several months, and they got through that. There is an acute shortage of daycare in this country, and I think this is the one thing in this political environment, and I don't want to get into politics, but both Republicans and Democrats agree, we need daycare in order for people to work. And so, in order to have daycare services, you have to have folks like us to work with towns like you to put those together. The question about road improvements, that comes right out of our pocket. We pay for every cent of that. And one of the, one of the, one of the reasons that this dragged on a bit was because, at first, there were significantly more road improvements than are shown here, that cost a tune of about $850,000, which frankly, they can only charge so much for their, you know, their tuition. And so therefore, we were able to work with DOT to get those improvements. That's, you're still looking at about almost a half million dollars' worth of improvement, so that's not nothing. The, just a couple of facts about this. There are 100, around 150 children that will attend this particular location, zero to four years old. So there are no activities at night, there are no homecoming or anything like that. There are 20 teachers that work there full-time. The reason we asked for a reduction, that as Tyler mentioned earlier, from 60 parking spaces to 47, is we don't need them. We don't need 60 spaces. So, you know, especially in a time where we're all trying to be more green about our development, why put more pavement out there when we don't need it? What happens is, as he mentioned, is we have staggered times where these children are dropped off, and at, let's just say, the very most that there's, and because there's a lot of times they're siblings, you'll have a four-year-old, a two-year-old, or whatever, and so you'll have one car coming in for a couple, a couple children. But let's say that that doesn't happen. Let's say there's 150 different families with 150 different children. So the most you're going to get in the morning is 150 coming in, and the most you're going to get in the afternoon is 150 coming out to pick them up. And then, of course, you have the 20 teachers. The 20 teachers will come in in the morning, they'll stay all day. When you go through that parking lot around noon, you'll see there's about 20 cars in that parking lot, and there's never more than 20 cars in that parking lot, and there may be a delivery or something, but otherwise, there's no parents there, except in the morning and in the afternoon. And again, those, those times are staggered. So, so I understand some of the comments that were made about traffic. There's nothing we can do about the existing traffic out there, I'm sorry to say. We are contributing in a couple of ways for traffic. There is the dedication of right-of-way, which will eventually, as Todd just addressed, eventually widen those roads to provide, you know, better traffic flow through there. And then, there are the improvements that we're putting in to this location. This is a Monday-through-Friday operation, there won't be any weekend services provided there, and the most, most likely that your neighbors will be able to hear, you know, children laughing and playing and swinging and, you know, on that playground out there in the afternoon. So, I hope that answers some of your questions about the particular use. I'd be happy to answer anything else, but we hope that you'll approve of this. Thank you.
Okay, that's very helpful. Anybody have questions?
What are, what are the hours of operation?
They, I think the first teacher gets there around between 7:00 and 8:00, I'm not really sure, and then I think they can drop off sometime around there, and then pick them up, you know, sometime around 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock.
So, are we saying from 7:00 to 6:00 p.m.?
That sounds about right.
For a daycare?
It's all daycare, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the teachers would be arriving early, as I guess is what I'm saying. In terms of what time, I really don't know what time they drop them off, to be honest with you.
So you don't know anything about the staggered times?
About the staggered drop-off times? No, I don't. I'm not involved in the operation, I'm just the developer.
Well, I mean, the reason to ask, because it does impact, I mean, I mean, so you've got two elementary schools, two schools right there, and their drop-off time, 7:25, 7:35, pickup time, 2:05, 1:55. So, I mean, to mitigate the traffic, you don't want drop-off times and pickup times around, around those. So that, I mean, that's why that becomes important information.
Sure. I'd be happy to get that, I just, like I said, I'm just the developer here, I don't, I don't need their operation. But again, 150 in, 150 out, relatively speaking, I realize it's zero today, and I'm sure some of the neighbors would love to keep it at zero, but, but relatively speaking, it's a very small percentage of the traffic that's, that's out there now.
And, you know, and I'm pretty familiar with daycares, and so there may maybe, may not be evening activities, but there are daytime activities. I mean, there's the Christmas party, or whatever. And those, again, those happen during the day, and those are usually, unless they're going to stay, anyway, again, it comes back to how they stagger. If they're, if every class is doing that, then you've got 150 parents showing up on that day. I know, you can't, you can't.
I don't think they do a lot of that, to be honest with you.
Well, I mean, but, that's all subjective.
And it's zero to four years old, so again, these are, some of these.
The baby, yeah, I understand that, the younger ones not, yeah, but from two, three, four, there are.
And you can't plan parking for the four or five events in the course of the year, unfortunately. Todd, what is the traffic like on Rogers Road? I'm very familiar with Wesley Chapel and, and the days when I do not want to be turning onto Wesley Chapel, the times of day. What about Rogers Road?
I'm sure these, these folks that live near this area probably could tell, tell you better than I can what's on Rogers Road, because I've, I don't drive it in the afternoons.
Well, I'm in the Holly Park area, so that's why I'm familiar with Wesley Chapel, but not necessarily Rogers Road.
Yeah, I think, I think some of the complaints were, again, a lot about queuing from the intersection back to the older subdivisions, and then, of course, trying to get in and out of there with, you know, it being, without, well, when school's not in, I think it's, I want to say it's 45, 45 down Rogers Road, and I think it goes 45 down to 35, correct? Yeah, yeah, okay. So, and of course, so you know, it's 35, people are probably going 45, so I'm sure it's hard to get out to the left. So again, that was, the concern was the queue and stuff, and based on the phases, the phasing of the lights and everything, that should, that should help. Blake, I'm sorry, is it Blake? Blake, he mentioned about. Blake, he mentioned about DOT reducing some of the requirements. I, I just want to clarify, they reduced some of the tapering because of the pond that's over there across the street, the Man Mableen that has the, the big earth dam that's higher than the roadway. Well, obviously, you know, we didn't want, nobody wants to go ahead and pack that thing, and nobody's going to spend the money to move it. So DOT had to take that in a little bit of consideration. Normally, they want a, they want more of a lengthy taper, like for instance, this taper right here, it's usually not that, it's usually a lot more gradual in a sense, but they couldn't do it because, again, you're going to end up getting into that earth perm, and obviously nobody wants to do that. So that's kind of the reason why they compromised. It had nothing to do with storage lanes or anything like that.
Okay, thank you, Todd, that's helpful.
The other question's me.
I don't know, anybody else have questions for this gentleman? Thank you so much. Okay, any more questions or comments from the board? It's very quiet. Do I have any comments from the board? I can hear everybody thinking really hard.
Well, Madam Chair, very reluctantly, I will make a motion that CZ 2023-0067 be approved.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All approving? In favor?
Aye.
Any, any nays? Okay, that project passes as well. Is there any other business before the board today? Okay, I thank, thank everybody for, for their time, reminding them that this is an approving board, a recommending board rather, not an approving board, so this, these two projects will come before the town council in about a month?
Sometime in October, either the first or the second meeting. So it will either be on October eighth or October twenty-second, but the same notifications that were sent out and legal ads, mailouts will be sent out for those meetings as well.
Okay, very good. Then I declare this meeting closed for tonight.